You're set. All right. Reconvene. Councilor Nash.
Thank you. Proposed amendment to South Bridge zoning bylaws, regulation of signs. Add new section 8.9, regulation of signs, together with the following regulations. 8.9, regulation of signs. 8.9.1, general objectives. Part A. Signs are regulated and restricted in order to place limitations on the size, location, type, and illumination, and to ensure appropriateness for the district, building in use, and be protective of property values and the safety, convenience, and welfare of the town of South Bridge residents. It is also the intent of this bylaw, too. One, prevent adverse community appearances while protecting the character of the area in which they are located. Two, protect and enhance the visual environment of the town, and to prevent or minimize damage to the environment. Three, restrict private signs and lights which violate privacy, or which increase the probability of accidents by distracting attention or obstructing vision. Four, encourage signing and lighting and other communications which aid orientation, express local history and character. Five, reduce conflict among private signs and lighting from environmental informational signs, such as alternating time and/or temperature signage. Six, permit maximum legibility and effectiveness of signs, and to prevent over-concentration improper placement in excessive balkened area by providing a limiting control. The rules and regulations contained herein shall govern the construction, alteration, repair, maintenance, replacement, and erection of all signs within the town of South Bridge. 8.9.2, permitting. A. Permit requirements. Applicants must submit signed permit applications with drawings to the building inspector prior to purchasing and affixing a sign. No permanent sign shall be erected, altered, replaced, or relocated without a permit issued by the building inspector. No sign shall be allowed unless it is in conformance with the current Massachusetts State Building Code except as specifically permitted. B. A signed permit shall become null and void if the work for which the permit was issued has not been completed within a period of six (6) months from the date of permit. The building inspector may at their discretion issue extensions covering a period not to exceed one (1) year from the date of issue of the original permit. C. Sign regulations vary based on the zoning district in which the sign is located. The town of South Bridge has eight (8) zoning districts. One, Residence One Districts (R1). Two, Residence Two Districts (R2). Three, Residence Three Districts (R3). Four, Retail Business Districts (RB). Five, General Business Districts (GB). Six, Central Core District (CC). Seven, Office Research Districts (OR). Eight, Manufacturing Districts (M). All zoning districts can be found in multiple locations throughout the town. The zones are referred to by the abbreviations listed above. 8.9.3, Allowed Signs and Sign Regulations. A. General Regulations. The following requirements shall apply to all signs and other advertising devices in all zoning districts. One, no sign or other advertising device with visible, moving, or movable parts, or with flashing, animated, or intermittent illumination, shall be erected or maintained except as approved by the zoning enforcement officer. Two, no illumination shall be permitted which is visible from any portion of a way so as to create a traffic hazard. Three, signs may be illuminated by a steady stationary light of reasonable intensity shielded and directed solely at the sign, an internal light of reasonable intensity, a neon or gas-willed tube, or light emitting diodes (LED). Four, all signs lighted externally shall be shielded or directed in such a way as to prevent spillage on the building or onto streets, parking, driveway areas, or surrounding properties. Five, no freestanding sign or other advertising device or part thereof shall be more than 20 (20) feet above ground level. No sign or other— pardon me. Six, no sign or other advertising device attached to a building shall project above the roof or parapet line—I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce that right. Seven, no sign or other advertising device attached to a building shall project more than three (3) feet from a building, or two-thirds the width of the sidewalk, whichever is less. Eight, no sign shall be erected in any manner that will completely cover windows or doors. Nine, no signs shall be erected on public property without express written permission from the town. Ten, no remote signs (i.e. on a neighboring or other property) shall be erected. B. Residential Districts (R1, R2, R3). The following requirements shall apply to all signs and other advertising devices in all residential zoning districts. One. One, sign for each family residing on the premises indicating the name of the owner or occupant, or pertaining to a permitted accessory use, provided that each sign does not exceed six (6) square feet in area. Two. One, sign not over sixteen (16) square feet in area pertaining to permitted buildings, structures, and uses of the premises other than dwellings and their accessory uses. Three, each temporary sign pertaining to the sale or lease of the premises must be unlighted and not over eight (8) square feet in area, and all signs must not aggregate more than eighteen (18) square feet in area. Four, unlighted directional signs not exceeding six (6) square foot in area pertaining to churches, schools, institutions, and other nonprofit or public uses. C. Business Districts (GB, RB, CC). The following requirements shall apply to all signs and other advertising devices in business zones. One, sign area shall not exceed ten (10) percent of the side of the building upon which the sign is to be attached. Mall-style shopping centers shall not exceed four hundred fifty (450) square feet aggregate. Two, one freestanding sign of not more than forty-eight (48) square feet for premises of less than three (3) acres, sixty-four (64) square feet for premises of more than three (3) acres. Such shine shall not exceed twenty (20) feet in height. Three, only one (1) exterior sign with an area not exceeding twelve (12) square feet shall be erected on any nonconforming building or use. Four, only one (1) sign shall be allowed on each side of a structure facing upon a public way. Five, within the central core (CC). Signage is strongly suggested to follow the Urban Renewal Plan Downtown Center Design Guidelines. These design guidelines seek to preserve and enhance the rich and diverse history of South Bridge, seeking to blend in new development while preserving the downtown center's historic character. D. Office Research and Manufacturing Districts (OR, M). The following requirements shall apply to all signs and other advertising devices in the office research and manufacturing zones. One, no freestanding sign shall exceed a height of twenty (20) feet. Two, freestanding signs shall be placed no more than half the setback distance away from the building. Three, no sign shall exceed ten (10) percent of the side of the building upon which the signs are to be located. Four, if more than one (1) sign designating more than one (1) use of a structure is erected, the accumulated sign area shall not exceed fifteen (15) percent of the side of the building upon which the signs are to be attached or located. E. Temporary signs. Following signs, banners, pennants, easily-removed signs attached to windows where advertising displays are allowed on a temporary basis, may be freestanding and do not need a permit from the town. Temporary signs shall be removed within thirty days—sorry, correction—thirty (30) days of placement unless specified below. One, construction signs. One, unlighted sign of up to thirty-two (32) identifying parties involved in construction is allowed on the premises where the sign is located. The signs shall be removed prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit. Construction signage is temporary and limited to the span of the project's valid building permit. Two, real estate signs. Each sign pertaining to the sale or lease of the premises must be unlighted and not over eight (8) square feet in area, and all signs must not aggregate more than eighteen (18) square feet in area in all residential districts, and each sign must be not over eighteen (18). Correction. I'm going to begin part two again. Real estate signs. Each sign pertaining to the sale or lease of the premises must be unlighted and not over eight (8) square feet in area, and all signs must not aggregate more than eighteen (18) square feet in area in all residential districts, and each sign must be not over eighteen (18) square feet in all other districts pertaining to the sale, rental, or lease of the premises on which the sign is displayed. Signs shall be removed within fourteen (14) days after sale, rental, or lease. Event signs. Unlighted signs of up to thirty-two (32) square feet in business and industrial districts, and eight (8) square feet in residential districts, may be displayed on private property and are limited to one (1) per street frontage announcing a drive or event of a civic—philanthropic—philanthropic, educational, or religious organization. Signs shall be installed no sooner than thirty (30) days prior to the event, and shall be removed within seven (7) days after the event. Four, political signs. Due to federal First Amendment rights, political signs are exempt from regulations except that they are subject to public safety requirements. Political signs shall be installed no sooner than ninety (90) days before an election, and shall be removed within seven (7) days after the close of the polls. Five, banner signs. Nonprofit charitable community organizations shall be allowed to erect sign banners not to exceed one hundred (100) square feet in area. Banner signs shall be installed no sooner than thirty (30) days prior to the event, and shall be removed within seven (7) days after the event. Display window/door signs. That was number six. Display window/door signs. Signs on the surface of windows, doors, or inside windows/doors can only be lit by the building illumination and cover no more than twenty-five (25) percent of the display window or door area. Seven, noncommercial signs. Buildings occupied solely for the civic, philanthropic, educational, religious, or other noncommercial purposes are exempt from regulations except that they are subject to public safety requirements. Eight, seasonal decorative signs. Seasonal decorative signs and residential decorative signs are exempt from regulations except that they are subject to the public safety requirements. Nine, yard/garage sale signs, not to exceed five (5) square feet, displayed on private property, and limited one to each premise. Not to be erected earlier than three (3) days preceding the sale, and shall be removed within twenty-four (24) hours following. F. Removing or reconstructing signs. No sign heretofore approved and erected shall be repaired, altered, or removed, nor shall any sign or substantial part thereof which is blown down, destroyed, or removed be re-erected, reconstructed, rebuilt, or relocated unless it is made to comply with all applicable requirements of this bylaw. 8.9.4, enforcement. Any violation of section 8.9 of the zoning bylaw shall be enforceable by the zoning enforcement officer or a designee of the town through the means described in section 2.2 of these bylaws. Signs which were legally erected before adaptation of this bylaw shall not be voluntarily rebuilt, altered, or relocated without conforming to this bylaw. Men section 10 by adding the following definitions under umbrella term sign as stated below. Sign terms. The following terms apply to the regulation of signs. Banner sign. Signs made of cloth, fabric, paper, non-rigid plastic, or similar types of material. National flags, flags of political subdivisions, and symbolic flags of an institution or business are excluded. Construction sign. A temporary sign erected on the premises on which construction is taking place during the period of such construction, indicating the names of the architects, engineers, landscape architect, contractors, or similar artisans, and the owner's financial supporters, sponsors, and similar individuals or firms having a role or interest with respect to the structure of project. Electronic message center. Means any sign on which the characters, letters, or illustrations can be changed automatically or through electronic or mechanical means. Electronic message centers include time and temperature signs. Freestanding sign. A sign attached to the ground and supported by uprights placed on or in the ground. Sign area. The area defined by the frame or edge of a sign. However, where there is no geometric frame or edge of the sign, the area shall be defined by a projected enclosed rectilinear shape which most closely outlines the said sign. Sign area includes the advertising surface and any framing, trim, or molding, but not the supporting structure. Sign height. The vertical distance from the grade below the sign to the uppermost module, cabinet, or character. Political sign. A temporary sign which advertises a candidate or candidates for public elective office, a political party, or which promotes a position on a public or ballot issue. Real estate sign. A temporary sign which advertises the real estate on which it is located for rent, lease, or sale. Shopping center sign. A pylon-type sign announcing the shopping center itself, and shall be a maximum of twenty (20) feet in height, and shall be appropriately landscaped.
That's the first reading. Any comments, questions? Councilor Steves?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I noticed in the current bylaws, some of these things have changed. I'm like—probably through you to Eric. Like, for example, the last one, shopping center sign, was originally fifteen feet.
I didn't understand a word you just said.
Okay. We're late. I'm tired. Some of these things have changed between the current bylaw and the proposed bylaws. And like, for example, this last one, shopping center signs, the original bylaws say it's fifteen feet in height. Now it's twenty. Why?
Uniformity across, you know, across the districts there. So, for example, under C, business districts, it does say that one freestanding sign shall not—of, you know, various square footages—such shine shall not exceed twenty feet in height.
Okay.
So if you change it there, you've got to change it in the definitions also.
Okay. Yeah, I see a whole bunch of twenty feet in here. Okay. Also, let's see here. I have just a couple of word things in here. Under 8.9.4 enforcement, it says before adaptation—it should be before adoption. Also, on—under this definition for construction sign, it says the last couple of words should read "the structure or project," not "of project."
What was that?
It's under the sign terms, the construction sign definition.
Yeah.
The last few words should read "the structure or project," not "of project."
Okay.
And I was also curious about, under section C, the business districts, 8.9.3C. I'm just curious, where it mentions the Urban Renewal Plan Downtown Center Design Guidelines, are those available on the website?
I'm sorry?
The Urban Renewal Plan Downtown Center Design Guidelines, are those available on the website?
If they're not, I believe they are, but if they're not, they will be.
Okay. Because definitely if somebody needs to refer to those, then they need to know where they get them. So. Oh, and also, under section B above that in the same page, four, it should six square feet in area. Mostly little technical things, but I think that's all I saw at the moment, so.
Anything further?
Hi.
Councilor Nash?
Thank you. I always get worried when it comes to signs because it's a form of speech, free speech. So is this consistent with the ruling that came down with Reed versus the Town of Gilbert?
Yes, it is. Yes. Myself and the Plany Board did extensive research—
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Yes, it is. Myself and the Plany Board did extensive research on that prior to bringing this forward, finalizing the workshop process, and bringing it to the PND Subcommittee. So, yes, it does. This is a short answer.
Okay. Because—and I know that we had some citizens in town at one time just put up signs, political signs, and we were taking them down—the town was taking—not we, me personally, but the town was taking them down, and they brought it to court, and the court said, "No," you know. But you put it in here without express permission from the town to put up signs? Why don't we just have one central location for—or a couple of central locations? This way, it's known, we're not discriminating against anyone, and we don't have a bunch of signs everywhere, all over town property.
Well, I think that's a fantastic idea that was actually never discussed at all during the process up to this point, so.
So.
I think it's a great idea, honestly. You know, to designate a spot.
To limit signs to one area? I think we're—
I said, wait a minute, wait a minute. I said, "or a couple of central locations," because, I mean—
Freedom of speech.
I get it, but if you're conforming to certain areas in town—Charlton does it, okay? And you're telling everyone, "This is where you can put your signs," then you're not violating anybody's free speech.
And you're talking specifically about political signs?
I know. I'm talking about just signs, advertising, political—that's what I'm talking about.
It's a direct violation of First Amendment.
No, it's not.
Oh, yes, it is.
No, it's not. I'm sorry, it's not.
Rather than debating that tonight, I would like to see other bylaws if you can—
Not if you have a central location for your signs.
I would like—
That's where everyone—and you're not discriminating against anyone.
I would like—
It's not a violation of First Amendment.
If you have some data on that to show that, then we can consider it, but I'd like to see some bylaws out there that you could actually do that.
Okay, I'll look.
Counselor Lazo?
We have a political sign bylaw that the sign has to come down by a certain date. That's been there forever. There's still a campaign sign by the border coming in from Stirbridge, and I like this document, by the way, a good starting point, you know, to regulate the signs, but enforcement becomes part of the inspectors' department. Are we going to have to hire another person to enforce this, or?
No. No, we're not.
As far as going back to the campaign sign, when I say your First Amendment rights, what I'm talking about is, you're going to tell me that I can't put a campaign sign on my lawn?
No. I'm saying on town property. I'm not saying not on anybody—I'm talking about town property.
You're not supposed to put political signs on town property, period.
But that's—if I may, Mr. Chair, that's where—a couple years ago, we had a resident who was putting them everywhere. We were taking them down. He took us to court, and the judge ruled, yes.
The rule is there.
In his favor, unless we had a certain spot for all signs.
Mr. Chairman, the rule is there. If you put one on the state property, the state truck drives by, picks your sign up, and throws it away. If there's a sign on town property and someone calls it in, the DPW goes and gets it, and it goes down a DPW bond. The law is there, and the enforcement just has to happen.
No.
All right. We're getting away from the point—we'll cite this up at another time. This is a reading of this bylaw. Stop it right now. So. All right. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, that's the first reading. We'll have the second reading next meeting. And we'll put it at the beginning of the agenda so that everybody's nice and away. Proposed ratify amendments to South Bridge zoning bylaws introducing the addition of section 8.7 adult-use marijuana establishments, moving the current section 8.7 adult-oriented businesses to new section 8.8. First reading. Counselor Adams, you volunteer to read it?
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proposed amendment to South Bridge zoning bylaws, adult-use marijuana establishments, 8.7. Adult-use marijuana establishments, 8.7.1 purposes. It is recognized that the nature of the substance cultivated, processed, and/or sold by marijuana establishments may have objectionable operational characteristics and should be located in such a way as to ensure the health and safety and general well-being of the public, as well as legally authorized adult customers seeking to legally purchase marijuana for their own use. The specific and separate regulations of marijuana establishments hereafter also referred to as an ME is necessary to advance these purposes and ensure that such facilities are not located within close proximity of minors and do not become concentrated in any one area within the town of South Bridge. Subject of the provisions of this zoning bylaw, chapter 48 of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 94G of the Massachusetts General Laws, and 935 CMR 500, marijuana establishments will be permitted to provide legal cultivation, product manufacturing, and retail sale of marijuana for non-medical adult marijuana use in a manner that complies with state regulations. It is neither the purpose nor intent of this section of the bylaw to supersede any federal or state laws governing the sale or distribution of narcotic drugs. 8.7.2 applicability. These—this section applies to recreational adult-use marijuana establishments, or otherwise known as AUME, to be constructed after the effective date of this section. The commercial cultivation, production, processing, assembly, packaging, retail, or wholesale sale, trade, distribution, or dispensive marijuana for adult and medical use is permitted upon application to and the granting of a special permit and site plan approval by the planning board, acting as a special permit granting authority as specified in the planning board's rules and regulations. This bylaw does not apply to the cultivation of industrial hemp as is regulated by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources pursuant to general laws, chapter 128, section 116 through 123. 8.7.3 requirements for adult-use marijuana establishments. In addition—to—
I'm just checking to go downstairs.
Got it. In addition to the standard requirements for uses permitted by right or requiring a special permit or site plan approval, the following shall also apply to all marijuana establishments. A, application requirements. The special permit application, public hearing, and decision procedures shall be in accordance with the section 8.7, the planning board's rules and regulations in section 2.5 of this bylaw. In addition to those materials required for special permit and site plan approval as listed in the planning board's rules and regulations, no special permit will be granted by the planning board for a marijuana establishment unless an application containing the following is submitted. One, a copy of the town council-approved host community agreement. Two, a proposed timeline for achieving operation of the ME and evidence that the applicant will be ready to operate within that proposed time. Three, evidence that the applicant has adequate liability, insurance, or maintenance of escrow as required in 935 CMR 500. Four, a copy of the detailed written operating procedures as required by the Cannabis Control Commission in 935 CMR 500.105, or its successor regulation, and as otherwise required by other applicable law or regulation. Five, location of all other AUMEs in Worcester County. Six, a copy of the policies and procedures for home delivery required by the Cannabis Control Commission for the AUME. Seven, a copy of the policies and procedures for the transfer, acquisition, or sale marijuana between the AUME and another or independent testing laboratory as required by the Cannabis Control Commission. Eight, a copy of the proposed waste disposal procedures. Nine, a description and list of any waivers granted by the Cannabis Control Commission for the AUME. Ten, details of the proposed fertilizer, pesticide, water uses, or wastewater plans for any site that will include cultivation. Eleven, evidence of the applicant's right to use the proposed site for marijuana establishment such as a deed, lease, or other real estate instrument. Additionally, if a cultivation facility, evidence of contract or agreement to grow marijuana. Twelve, a detailed floor plan of the premises of the proposed AUME that identifies the square footage available and describes the functional areas of the AUME, including areas for any preparation of marijuana-infused products or open-air cultivation. Thirteen, a description of the security measures, including employee security policies required by the Cannabis Control Commission for the AUME. Fourteen, a conditional letter of approval, the security measures for the AUME, including lighting, fencing, storage, gates, and alarms to ensure the safety of the persons and to protect the premises from theft from the South Bridge Police—from the South Bridge Police Department. Fifteen, detailed site plans that include all the information required under rules and regulations of the planning board, including distances to any of the uses identified in sections 8.7, 3, D below. B, use. One, AUME facilities may only be involved— One, AUME facilities may only be involved in the use, uses permitted by its definition and may not include other businesses or services. Two, no smoking, burning, application, or consumption of any product containing marijuana or marijuana-related products shall be permitted in the premises unless expressly permitted under this law and permitted by state law or regulation. The prohibition on this, on, onsite consumption shall also include private social clubs or any other establishments which allows for social consumptions of marijuana or marijuana products on the premises, regardless of whether the product is sold to consumers onsite. Three, hours of operation for any AUME retail establishment, establishments shall be established by the planning board, but in no event shall said facilities be open to the public between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM, including home delivery services. Four, AUME facilities that can demonstrate that any, that they comply with the agricultural exemption under Mass. General Law, chapter 48, section 3, must still apply for site plan approval. C, limit on retail establishments. One, retail establishments shall be limited to four. D, physical requirements. One, no AUME shall have, have drive-through services. Two, ventilation, all AUME facilities shall be ventilated in such a manner that no, um, A, pesticides, insecticides, or other chemicals, or products used in the cultivation or processing are dispersed in, into the outside atmosphere, and B, odor from marijuana or its processing can be detected by a person with an unimpaired and otherwise normal sense of smell at the exterior of the marijuana business or at any adjoining use or property. Three, exterior signs shall identify only the name of the AUME, but shall not display advertisements for marijuana or any brand name, nor shall marijuana, marijuana-infused products or associated products be displayed or clearly visible to a person from the exterior of the AUME. Four, for AUME retail establishments, all exterior building openings, entries, and windows shall be approved by the planning board for purposes of display of goods, signage, signage, et cetera. E, location requirements. One, no AUME retail buildings shall be located within 500 feet of the fol, 500 feet of the following, or 250 feet if located in the central core, as measured in a straight line from the building and/or area actively used. A, public or private preschool, primary, and secondary school under 935 CMR 500.1103, I believe that's I. Is that I? What is it, L? Thank you, can't see that closely. Dancers Gymnastics School, Martial Arts School, Licensed Daycare Center, or any other facility where children commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis, or B, a public library, or C, a playground, athletic field, or any other recreational areas where children commonly congregate. Two, no AUME cultivation slash manufacturing slash laboratory facilities is to be located within, A, 100 feet of any abutting occupied residence in a residential zoning district as measured in a straight line from the existing structure to proposed development. B, 250 feet of any non-conforming residential structures in the non-residential districts as measured in a straight line from existing structure to proposed development. Three, no AUME retail establishment is to be located within 250 feet of any residential zoning district, residential structure, or any non-conforming residential structures in non-residential districts. Distance shall be measured in a straight line from the residential zone, boundary line, or from existing structure to proposed development. Additionally, no AUME retail establishment shall be located within 250 feet of any other AUME retail establishment. Distance shall be measured in a straight line from the building and/or area actively used to the building and/or area actively used for any other AUME, AUME retail establishment. Four, no marijuana or marijuana-based products shall be sold or grown or cultivated in motels and dormitories, or inside a mobile structure such as a cargo container, motor vehicle, or other similar non-permanent enclosures. Five, the distance requirements may be altered at the discretion of the planning board through the special permit process, or application, reduced only if the applicant, applicant demonstrates that the marijuana establishment will employ adequate security measures to prevent diversion of marijuana to minors. F, reporting requirements. One, all special permit and site plan approval holders for an AUME facility shall provide the police department, fire department, department of inspection services, and the planning board with the names, phone numbers, and email addresses of all management staff and key holders, including a minimum of two operators or managers of the facility identified as contract persons to whom one can provide notice if there are operating problems associated with the establishment. All such contact information shall be updated as needed to keep it current and accurate. Two, the permit holder shall file a copy of any incident report required under 935 CMR 500.1107 with the Department of Inspection Services, Board of Health, Police Department, Fire Department, and the planning board within 24 hours of creation by the AUME. Such reports may be redacted as necessary to comply with any applicable state or federal laws and regulations. Three, the permit holder shall file a copy of any deficiency statement, plan of correction, summary, cease and desist order, quarantine order, summary suspension order, order of limited sales, notice of hearing, or final action issued by CCC or the Division of Administration Law Appeals as applicable regarding the AUME with the Department of Inspection Services, Police Department, and Planning Board within 48, 48 hours of receipt by AUME. By, no, sorry, four, each AUME permitted under the zoning bylaw shall, as a condition of its special permit, file an annual report to the planning board, and the town clerk can provide a copy of all current applicable state licenses and registrations for the AUME and/or its owners, any updated operating policies required under 935 CMR 500.103 by the Cannabis Control Commission, the current insurance policies for the AUME, and demonstrated compliance with the condition of, conditions of the special permit. Five, the owner of the, the owner or manager is required to respond by phone or email within 24 hours of contact by city official concerning their AUME at the phone, at the phone number or email address provided to the city as a contact for the business. 8.7.4 approval, transfer, discontinuance of use. A, the special permit shall remain exclusively with the applicant, um, who shall also be known as permit holder after the granting of the special permit, who shall be the owner or VC of the premises described in the application as the site for the proposed AUME, and shall terminate automatically on the date there is a voluntary or involuntary separation of the applicant's title or leasehold interest in the premises, or the applicant's right to occupy the premises, premises terminates for any reason. B, a special permit granted under the section is non-transferable and shall have a term limit to the duration of the applicant's ownership or leases of the premises as an AUME dependent on the applicant's continued existence as the same legal entity. Any violation of sections 8.7.4E shall be considered a transfer for the purposes of this bylaw. C, special permit shall lapse upon the expiration or termination of applicant's registration by CCC. D, the permit holder shall notify the Department of Inspection Services and Police Department and Planning Board in writing within 48 hours of the cessation, cessation of operations of AUME, or the expiration and termination of permit holder's registration with CCC. E, the legal entity and structure of the applicant slash permit holder shall not change as represented in compliance sections 8.7.3 Alpha 13. F, an AUME shall be required to remove all material, plants, equipment, and other paraphernalia prior to the surrendering, prior to surrendering state-issued licenses or permits, or within six months of ceasing operations, whichever comes first. 8.7.5 findings, any addition to the standard findings for a special permit or cited plan approval to the special permit granting authority must also find all the following. A, that the AUME facility, I'm sorry, the AMU, AMUE facility demonstrates that it will meet all the permitting requirements of all the applicable agencies within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will be in compliance with the all-applicable state laws and regulations. B, that the applicant has satisfied all the conditions and requirements of this section and other applicable sections of this bylaw slash ordinance. C, that the AUME facility is designed to minimize any adverse visual or economic impacts on abutters and other parties in interests. D, that the AUME facility provides adequate security measures to ensure that no individual participant will pose a direct threat to the health or safety of others, and that the storage and/or location of cultivation is adequately secured. And E, that the AUME facility adequately addresses issues of traffic, demand, circulate, circulation flow, parking, and queuing, is that, am I saying that right? Okay, good. Particularly as, particularly as, at peak periods at the facility and, and impact on neighboring uses.
Comments? Council steves?
Um, thanks. A couple of them. First off, um, personally, I'd like to see that in the second line of the very first purposes section, that we eliminate the words "may have objectionable operational characteristics" and.
You have to, I didn't understand a word you just said, I'm sorry.
I was suggesting that we get rid of the words from the second line of the purposes section, the words "may have objectionable occupation, operational characteristics," and, get rid of those words, and just have it read, "establishments should be located in such a way, blah, blah, blah." Um, 'cause I think that that's just, that's just a blatant opinion, whereas the other stuff is actual reasonable law.
Could I ask, before you go further, why was that put in there?
That language mimics what is currently in the medical marijuana bylaws.
Okay. I don't remember seeing it there, but, okay. Still, I think, I don't, I still think it's blatant opinion. Um, I was also curious about, um, under section, let's see, 8.7.3A11, where it says contractor agreement to grow marijuana, does that, does that actually, are you, do you intend to mean with some stated recipient? I mean, I mean theoretically, that could be, is that what, is that what you intend?
I'm sorry?
Uh, section, that section there, um, under section A, 8.7.3A number 11.
Yep.
It says evidence of contract or agreement to grow marijuana. Do you mean, do you mean as in that they are actually growing it for a specific recipient?
No.
Or?
That's, that would be if they're leasing, let's say, a, a field, and they're for an exterior grow operation, that they actually have the right to use the outside property versus like, uh, let's say, using an old mill building, for example.
Okay. Okay.
Can I?
I, I can't tell you how many times, um, that I've seen, you know, the, I'm sure you've all seen them, the cleverly disguised with camouflage netting, uh, you know, a bunch of marijuana plants out in a field someplace, or, or, you know, in a clearing in the woods kind of a thing.
Mm-hmm.
This language is to kind of prevent that.
Okay.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, add, just add, go ahead. Just add to that quick.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Physical address, they have to actually have a physical address when they apply for this, so they have to have the lease, they have to have an agreement.
Yeah. I'm thinking like, something like that, somebody could own, say, have a physical address on one side of town, but own property on the other side of town, and they're growing it on that property. But they're growing it for themselves. They may be growing it for, say, for their, for their own business, but they wouldn't necessarily have a contract to grow it, 'cause they own the property.
At that point, they would have the legal.
I mean, there's, there's evident, there's other statements in here about having the legal, the legal permitting to, the legal permit, permission to use it, that if they own the property, obviously, they have the legal permission to use their own property.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so that's covered under that.
So, I'm just curious about the phrasing of that.
Right of use proposed, such as a deed, lease, or other.
Yeah, that would, that would certainly be covered by that part of it, yeah.
Evidence of contract agreement, yeah, I get it. Makes sense.
Um, also, under section B below, three, um, I think I mentioned this back in the public hearing, but I still really would like to see that 9:00 PM changed to either 10:00 or 11:00. 'Cause I think we're trying, we're, the whole idea is to, we want to encourage more businesses down, more businesses in town to stay open later, and some of the, some of the companies, especially some of the restaurants are open till 10:00 or 11:00, especially toward the end of the week. So, that's kind of what you, what do, what do you guys think?
I'm opposed.
Huh?
I'm opposed, I agree with the way it's written. We spoke about it at length at the meeting, and that was unanimous, well, not unanimous, but the vote by both council and planning board at that public hearing was that we would keep it at this. So if there's anybody else who wants to change it, but that was the vote that was taken at the public hearing.
Yeah, weren't they?
Uh, just for the people that are out there that may have not watched, I mean, that's the reason why.
No, no, I'm just throwing it out there. Um, also, under that same section B, number four, I'm always curious about this, where it mentions that they have to comply with the agricultural exemption, but still must apply for state plan, is that legal under 40, 40A? 'Cause isn't the whole point of 40A for agricultural exemption, um, that they are exempt from zoning? For, for agricultural uses, for agr, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're an agricultural property, you have five acres, you're exempt from zoning.
Correct, but essentially, what we're saying is that the cultivation of marijuana is not an agricultural practice, it's a manufacturing process, so therefore not subject to.
It's a plant.
I understand that there was a recent court case that may, um, uh, you know, say that this is, is no longer true, however, uh, that was a land court case that's being appealed, so, uh, I will, I would recommend keeping this language here until such time as the, uh, appeal process of that is over, and, uh, the actual state law changes.
'Cause I know if when it comes to, to industrial hemp, it's treated as an agricultural product.
That's a different animal.
And I know you specifically mentioned in here that that doesn't apply to industrial hemp, but it's still the same plant. Um, also, under section E, the same page, that the phrasing "and/or active, area actively used," does that intended to include things like their place's parking lot, something like that?
No.
No, so that's kind of a vague term. What did, what does it mean, what do you mean by it?
That means the area that the, the area of a, let's say, a building that is actively used by the marijuana retailer.
I'm, I'm thinking about some, about the other end, though, if you're, it measured a straight line from the building and/or area actively used, but, but would you include like, the parking lot of a public school as an area actively used, there's always cars in it?
No. Again, no, we're talking about area actively used.
For the, for the retail.
For the, for the, for the retail, and then also, like, you know, if it's a school, you wouldn't say the parking lot is actively used for the school, other than that your teachers are parking, it's, it's specifically, you know, you're talking about, under A, let's say, for area facilities where children commonly congregate.
Yeah.
Children don't generally congregate in parking lots.
No, but from a, from a zoning point of view, it's still the same parcel.
Yes.
That's why I'm asking.
But it's, the, the intent is the actual building where they commonly congregate, not parking lots.
Okay. Oh, and also, under, so the next page, seven, 8.7.3F5, it says a city official and the city, this, those should be, both be the town, a town official provided to the town. That was obviously taken from some city version. And 8.7.5C, it says bylaw slash ordinance, all of our, all of our laws are bylaws, they're not ordinances. And E, and its impact on neighboring area, neighboring uses.
And then further, council, are you good? Tom Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as members of the council know, I've not really come out and taken any kind of position on recreational marijuana, but I do have a concern about one comment, and I know council's gonna make the decision on this, but, but as it goes to E, location requirements, I'm concerned about the way this is written. Item number one, no AUME retail building should be located within 500 feet of the following, or 250 feet if located in the central core, and then it gives the types of, uh, facilities that you don't want recreational marijuana to be around, so, a public or private preschool, primary or secondary school, dance gymnastics, a public library, playground. The reason I suggest that the 500 feet there is to protect children, right? We're trying to keep these facilities away from children. This implies that children who go in our local central core have less protection than those children who are not in our, our, our central core, because you can have a school within 250 feet, as long as you're in the central, central core, I don't think that's very consistent, is, to be honest with you, I think that if you're trying to protect children, and, well, I think, I think that's the purpose of this even being in here, then you should be consistent among all children. I also concerned, quite frankly, central core, I think that it's possible that there could be more business, because these people will come down and, and use these shops and buy and stuff. But if I recall correctly, a little less than half the people in South Bridge also voted against marijuana, recreational marijuana. against marijuana, recreational marijuana, maybe some people who won't want to shop in the central core as a result of those types of facilities being there, particularly if they do have children. So, I just wanted to point that out for your consideration. Thank you.
Councilor Stevens?
I just wanted to say that I think that that, that particular issue is kind of addressed by section five of that same area, where it talks about employee adequate security measures to prevent diversion of marijuana to minors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you quickly. Will the town be doing inspections, monthly, yearly? And who is that under? Who would that fall under, the Board of Health or our inspection department?
The.
Or is it state mandate?
It's more of whatever the state mandates are for inspections that they'll have to comply with on the state level. We really just have the reports that are, are coming in. Obviously, if there's complaints, then yes, we would investigate to the full extent of the law with police, if it's a violation of, you know, any of the zoning bylaw, the zone enforcement officer, potentially myself as a planner, we would investigate those, those items. As far as annual inspection, no, the town would not be doing that.
There's no oversight by the town.
The state, I believe the state has annuals that they have to do on all establishments, and they have to conform to a whole long litany list of, of items that are way beyond what, what we're, you know, in addition to our, rather, what we're requiring in order for them to operate.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I didn't hear any other support for Councilor Stevens, elimination of the sentence may have objectional operational characteristics, does anybody that wants to consider removing that or not? Councilor Nash?
Thank you. I agree with Councilor Stevens, but I do recall from the joint meeting that there was a lack of support for it, so I'm not going to be too vocal, but I.
We, I, we didn't discuss that line.
There was a comment made about the nine P M. versus ten P M.
No, 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 I'm talking about the sentence where he says.
Oh, I'm sorry, misunderstood you.
And or sold by marijuana establishments may have an objectional operational characteristic. I, I tend to agree with Councilor Stevens on that, I mean, I, I think the sentence itself says or sold by marijuana establishments should be located in such a way as to ensure the health safety, I think.
I know, I'm.
I, I, yeah, I, I don't under, I, I get it was in the medical marijuana and that perhaps maybe we should eliminate that, but we're really talking about health safety, that is a qualifier that, that is an objectional thing, so I, I don't know, is anybody in agreement to take that? I'm in agreement, but.
I'm in agreement.
Anybody else?
Let's just take the vote.
All right, so can you take that part out? So you're going to go from establishments should be, eliminating may have objectional operational characteristics and should, and up to and, so it should be marijuana establishments should be located in such a way.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Because that's a, it's a strong statement as opposed to otherwise, right? Anything further?
If I may, yes, there's two, I call them Scrivener's errors that I, I came up with.
Okay.
Under eight point seven point three A fifteen, the subsection there, eight point seven point three should be E rather than D. And on eight point seven point four E, everything after the comma should be removed as that subsection there, A thirteen, was removed during the.
So you make those changes?
Yes.
All right, so the second reading?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Sorry, one more quick thing.
Yep.
Um, under applicability, eight point seven point two, I'm just curious, it says, mentions dispensing of marijuana for adult and medical use is permitted upon application, which is, which is true, but medical use isn't covered by this part of the bylaw. Should that be, should we probably strike that particular reference to medical use? Since that's under a separate section of the bylaw?
Was it that, I'm sorry?
It's under eight point seven point two applicability. It's this third, it's the third line down, it ends with or dispensing of marijuana for adult and medical use is permitted, blah, blah, blah.
If I may.
But this is only for, this is only for adult use, not, not medical.
Go ahead, Eric.
That, I believe the reason that's in there really is because there can be joint, adult use and medical facilities.
They can be joined, right.
That do both items, so.
Would they have to go through both bylaws and both permitting processes then if it's?
They have to go, they have to follow both sets of bylaws, but the planning board has discussed this at length and decided that, no, they will hold one public hearing.
Which makes sense.
Per facility.
Okay.
So if it's a joint use for medical and adult use, and if it's a cultivation for both, that it'll all be under one.
Okay.
One special permit.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thanks, Eric. Anything further? Okay, I'll hold that as a second reading. Thank you, Eric. Thanks for being here, so late. Council's forum, Council Lazo.
Making sure, I'd like to thank, I was talking with the department head, a former department head from years ago, I was explaining to him how this council operates in comparison to the council of the thirteen members and stuff, we do a little history lesson. What's amazing about this council and to credit to the people at the dais, including the manager, you do the healthy floor fight, you get, get your points out there and there isn't a personal attack, it's about the issues. This makes government run smoothly, I think, Jack under your tutelage, I think that, that you complement that. And, and in seeing what went on tonight and the meeting before and subcommittee, it's always the substance of the issue is what drives the council, not the personalities of the past. And I, and I just got to commend the council manager on that, I, I really enjoy serving under that atmosphere, it works well for the people. And then finally, I just want to tell Tara, my girl, I'm going to be home soon, it's his fault, we're too slow. Thank you.
Councilor Nash?
Thank you, through you. I won't rant tonight, but I want to go back to a topic that was brought up by the chair early on during chairman's announcements, and that's the nine eleven memorial. While I absolutely value the idea, the notion, it was very interesting this past weekend when I visited home to the Cape, neighbor was a firefighter, he is someone I've spoken with about our fire department and our station needs, but we had a quick conversation about nine eleven firefighter type memorial, and in that town, the notion was driven by the firefighters. I'd love to see our fire department pick that up, it's such a hot topic, I'd rather it not be politically motivated by members of this council. That is something that we can absolutely work with, but if it's something that the fire department, police department, first responders feel strongly about, I'd love to see them drive it. I don't think it needs to come from, from this dais. And the other thing that I want to say is, I'll stop there tonight, thanks.
So, just a quick, Councilor Nash, believe me, there's no political initiative on this side, we're responding to somebody that has brought it forward. Trust me, I'm, it's not a political motivation on council's side, as far as I'm concerned, it's response to request. Councilor Stevens?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilor Manna?
Oh, I'm going to try to be really quick. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the, the citizen, Ms. Williams that came up to speak at Citizens Forum, talking about her road, I did meet with her, I met with Mr. Hamel and Mrs. Hamel Sunday, and I did do a tour of Gulfwood Road, and I did go through Ellis Road. So, what I saw is the road's blocked, and I know why it was blocked, because of the beavers. And there is some water that's starting to come over on the blocked area again, so there might be some damming going up there. I don't know, I did not walk down that far to where I would get my feet soaking wet. She is right, there's carpeting there, there's, somebody set up chairs, it was like they set up house, they were having a party or something down there, I don't know. I did send that information out to the police. But if we're going to keep that road closed, then we need to maintain the roads that they're being detoured on and everything, because, you know, Ellis Road is a mess, the public. I, I didn't go down the private because the town can't do anything with the private, but the public is a mess. It, it's like patched here, there, holes, everything, it's just, it's awful, it's falling apart. Gulfwood Road is falling apart too. We're not taking care of it. We, we closed off their roads to go through Charlton, we're detouring them way out of their way, it's, it's a huge inconvenience, they pay taxes. There is one nice part of Gulf Road, Gulfwood Road, that I did see, and I was very disappointed after really thinking about this over the weekend, well, last night and today. The only part of Gulfwood Road that is really nice is like in the middle, kind of where the D P W department is, where it's all like paved and the sale coded. You go beyond that, up towards the, where the road's closed, it's, it's a mess. You go down past that, going down towards the school and stuff, Charlton Street, it's a mess there too. That's the only nice section. That is wrong. That gives a perception of, well, we don't care about you, we're going to take care of this part because we don't want our vehicles to get ruined. I have pictures here, I would really like you to look at them. And when she was talking about somebody filling in the pothole with dirt, she's, she's right, somebody brought some sand or something and filled in a pothole to try, because it's getting deep and it's just getting worse. And when Mr. Hamel, I know he spoke to you about the, at the end of his driveway, that is a pipe underneath there, I guess, is it a culvert? And it's, it's all like, it's like a frosty, that's not his driveway, that's the town. And that's what he was asking to get fixed. And I have all the pictures in here. I did look at the capital plan for the capital, can you pass that? Thank you. I did look at the capital, I didn't see anything on here for Gulfwood Road. Now, she, she was saying that people mentioned, that's for you. Yeah, you can, they can look at it, but, I mean, I want you to keep that so you have those pictures. Now, I lost my train of thought. So anyways, pardon me? Yeah, oh, yeah, I didn't see anything in the capital project for Gulfwood, nothing. So, she's, somebody's telling her one thing, and I look on the capital project, there's nothing here for Gulfwood Road unless there is a separate sheet for just roads, I don't know. But, and then when she talks about a turnaround, I don't know who's, who's telling her this, if it was you, if it was the D P W director, if it was the Board of Health, I don't know who was telling her this, but you can't make a turnaround around there, especially where she was talking, where she was told that they were going to, I mean, it's all ledge and there's all these trees, and it looks like if it rains, all those trees are just going to come flying down pretty soon. So, it is a mess down there, and we really need to be taking care of the people down there, especially if we're detouring them onto another road. I mean, the same thing happened with South Street when that bridge was closed, and it was a mess down there. Not as bad as this, though, this is worse. So, and I did get in touch with Senator Fatman's office, and I am going to do a tour down there with them, I'll let you guys know, everyone know, when that's going to take place, and I'm trying to get Representative Durant too, just to see if there's any money in, in the state coffers or something that maybe they could put towards the road or something. But we really need to pay attention, not just whining, it's, it's serious business down there, so, that's all.
Thank you. Just as a point of information, I believe Gulfwood Road, that section from D P W, while I, I agree it's the appearance of, hey, they took care of it, that was part of the school building project, and that's the only reason that section got repaired, is because we did the water lines up that section, so that's why it was part of the school building project, not to have it fixed because of that, it was just, we did all that section, am I correct, Council?
Correct.
Thank you. Just for the residents out there that think that D P W was taking care of themselves. Council Katrona?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you.
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, just the only thing I have tonight is, I want to thank the D P W for all the work that they're doing with the skate park, that they've gone above and beyond what I've asked them to do, and I really appreciate it, so they've got some more work to do, and we have a bunch of volunteers that are looking at painting the place up as well, so that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Council Mike.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to continue with Maria Avenue, the abandoned property on Maria Avenue, there's no erosion control, there's a large equipment on the property next to the sidewalk, there's a wall, a wall of rocks next to the sidewalk. I appreciate the emails I got from you and the Director of Inspections, I'm looking for some action. There are bylaws that cover all of this, and we've voted on two bylaws tonight, the problem isn't bylaws, problem is enforcement of the bylaws. The illegal dumping at the corner of Elm Street and Everett Street, I appreciate it when I mention it, that it gets cleaned up, it stays that way for a couple of days and then it starts up again. I, I think that if that bin was not there, there would be no illegal dumping. Today, I went by there and somebody put a load of dishes out there, so. It gets cleaned up and I appreciate it when you clean it up, but it just starts up again, so I, I think the only answer is to ask them to remove that bin. The bin is for clothing and shoes only, but people are illegally dumping everything else there. I also got a call from a constituent about some noise issues downtown, somebody is driving a Jeep or something up and down Main Street, they go around the rotary and they go back the other way with their stereo boombox in the back blasting away, so if the police officers down there who are, who are patrolling, I, I don't think you need a noise control machine for that, it's just common sense will tell you that, that's a public nuisance down there. I don't know why this person is doing that, except that they just want to create a public nuisance. And finally, I would like to say that I, I appreciated the invite to the new water pump station that opened up, I was down there with you and Councilor Adams and Chairman Jovan. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Tom Manager, and the Town Administrator of Charlton, the D E P and Casella for building that pump station, I think the residents up there are going to, whose wells are contaminated, are really going to appreciate the good clean water that they're going to get from South Bridge, it's a, it's one thing that's, that'll be an ease of mind for them, and I, I toured the water facility with Councilor Daniel, and I think that I was really impressed with our facility, and I think they're going to be very pleased with the fresh, clean South Bridge water, so thank you very much. And that's, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Council. Council Dana?
I am also, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Item twenty-three, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council is for Monday, October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, at seven P M. here in Council Chambers.
motion adjourned.
All in favor? Thank you, lunch, thank you, guys, appreciate it.